All right, looks like the clock hits seven o'clock, so good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 19th City of Escalon City Council meeting. If you could all join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Strowman?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Engel?
Here.
Mayor Pro temp Hagan?
Here.
And Mayor Bellinger?
Here.
Thank you. First item up is our consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for specific special consideration. Before we get started, I want to just say that I will be abstaining from items nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, as I do live in the estates.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull items three and four for additional discussion.
All right, anybody else up here would like to pull something for consideration and discussion?
I have a question on item two.
Okay. Is there anybody out in the public outside of items two, three, and four that have something on the consent calendar they'd like to pull for further consideration or discussion? All right, then I guess we can entertain a motion for the balance, then.
I'll make a motion.
Can you get a second on that?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Carrie's five oh. So let's go on to item number three, Councilman Strowman.
So, yeah, I mean, obviously, four of us are relatively new up here, and I just had a question for Justin as far as seems like there's a schedule for which roads get the slurry seal on what years, and I was just wondering if you can explain that to us, how that's that schedule is determined?
Well, we have a street index report that we kind of go by on the how the streets are themselves. We evaluate them on a yearly basis as far as depending on cracks, the depth of the cracks, separation. A lot of it also depends on how much soil is underneath the asphalt, depending how much we can do. And realistically, we're just trying to get into a uniform section to where when we do one street, we can come back ten year later, ten years later and do the others.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
No problem.
Item number four, also, Councilman Strowman.
So for staff, this $60,000 annually, where is where are those funds coming from?
Good evening. John Ando, Transit Manager. Those funds will come from our Transportation Development Act funds that we receive from the San Joaquin Council of Governments that are earmarked for public transit and street and roadway improvements.
So, John, are we are we planning on tracking the use of that so that after one year, if we see that it's been used four times in the entire year, that, I mean, is there an off-ramp that we can say that, yeah, we tried it, but it's not really a viable solution for the City of Escalon?
Yes. What I'll do is every year, I give council an update on just how the transit system's performing and emerging issues. I would include statistics on from the monthly reports that we would receive from meal car. And, yeah, if we feel, like you say, poor people are using it and it's just not providing value, we'll have language in it that'll allow us to terminate, and then we would keep the cars, and I would more likely presume we would move the cars over to become like relief vehicle, not relief vehicles, staff vehicles, which could potentially replace the staff vehicles that we've had for a very long time.
So last question, if, or you probably have this in the report, but are these vehicles going to be parked here at City Hall or at a park and ride park and ride lot? Or where are where can the general public access these vehicles to use?
They would be stationed at the park and ride lot at Main and Viking, and they would be able to be used for residents to run errands, and then when they're done, they would return them back to the park and ride lot for someone else to be able to access them.
Last question, now that this this if this program moves forward, I would make a recommendation to staff that we make some sort of announcement to the public that this is available for use. Here's some information, just so the general public that doesn't follow city council meetings know that this is now a service that's available.
Yes, I envision working with meal car will put announcements like in the newspaper, utility bills, website, the various social media groups on our city's social media page, and we would distribute flyers throughout the community, posting them in businesses and restaurants to let them know this is a new available service, especially for people who don't have access to automobiles.
John, you know, it's summertime, and I think we we have some pretty significant events coming up here with Park Feet and the Car Show and Wine and Brew Stroll, and then we also have the Farmer's Market, so it may be an opportunity to do some community outreach that well, that way, to advertise the public.
Agreed. Agreed, and actually, I'm glad you brought that up. I've been actually mapping out the various community events so that myself, as well as our T D who manages our Consolidated Transportation Services Agency, we can both participate and promote the various transportation programs available to city residents.
Thank you. That's all I have for number four.
Oh, and then should this go through? How fast will this be implemented?
I envision we'll start sometime in mid-July, early August at the latest.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to let you know, for meal cars already here in Stockton, they just started a program for low-income residents in the Stockton Central area with a lot of the vehicles parked at some of the apartment complexes, so they have the two vehicles ready for us, in essence.
John, just to reiterate, my understanding is this is 100% grant-funded with a two-year pilot program. Is that right?
That is correct.
And it's used for local driving only?
No, someone will be able to use it to go to Modesto, Oakdale Riverbank. I envision folks that would use this service would more likely use it, like if they can't access the transit system and they have the ability to drive, they'll probably go to medical appointments in Oakdale, they'd go shopping locally in town or shopping outside of town, go to Kaiser particularly, or maybe even go to MJC for school opportunities.
So in theory, it sounds pretty beneficial, so hopefully that's what will happen.
That's our ultimate goal, yes. And as part of the surveys that we'll do, we'll track how people are using the program.
Thanks, John. We have a question in the audience here. If you want to just hold on for just a second here while she makes her way to the podium?
Of course.
Oh, you're more than welcome to ask questions. That's what we like.
Hi, this is Sherry. I wasn't aware of the information behind this. So is this vehicle going to be equipped for like ADA, or we have many seniors who have wheelchair access, and is this vehicle going to be able to transport them if we get a driver to drive them to their appointments? John, were you able to hear that?
The vehicle will have like a trunk where a wheelchair could be placed inside, but ultimately, yeah, the person in the mobility device, if they're not able to drive the vehicle themselves, they would have to have somebody that's signed up in meal car to be able to drive the vehicle for that person. Otherwise, we would continue to have the E-Trans service, which would which has ramps and allows mobility devices to ride in.
Thank you, John. Were there any other questions out there, folks?
I have one more.
Yeah.
I know you've mentioned somewhat local transportation, John. Is there a mileage limit as far as how far these vehicles can be taken? I mean, could somebody pick one up and drive to Yosemite for the day?
It could. It's not ideal to do that because eventually, you're going to eat, the charges are based on how long you use the vehicle for. So it's really meant for, since it's car sharing, it's meant to do errands, like medical appointments, doctors, shopping and whatnot, but then to bring it back so someone else could use it. So you might end up with some high rental charges if you take it for the entire day.
I've got two.
Sure, go for it.
It looks like the city is responsible for cleaning and maintenance of the vehicles. Is that correct?
No, it would be meal car.
Meal car, and is there a frequency that's scheduled for cleaning and maintenance?
We have not established that yet, but I envision that it'll be no less than it'll be no less than weekly.
And as far as if there was something in there, like it was soiled in some manner, and you were notified, how how quick is a turnaround time on average for somebody to come out and make that cleanup so that the next person could use it?
Same day, since their offices and facilities based in Stockton.
Good.
I do want to let, I did pull up the pricing, and it is $4 per hour. It includes maintenance, insurance, roadside assistance, and 150 miles, and then 35 cents per mile. Daily, there is a $35 a day rate if you want to use it for the entire day, plus the 150-mile limitation. So Yosemite to Escalon is about 78 miles, so in theory, somebody could potentially use it to go to Yosemite for the day, bring it back, and maybe they'll have a slight mileage charge.
Hope the charge lasts.
But I guess for $35 a day, that's not bad when you think about it.
Yeah, road cars, a hundred bucks a day.
Compared to, yeah, compared to like an Enterprise or Hertz, that's going to be 100-plus dollars.
Mr. Ask, you've got another question for us.
Yeah, what about liability? I mean, does a person who can't afford auto insurance because they're a bad driver get to hop into this thing, and does the liability fall on the city or R T D?
Will be completely indemnified from the insurance, and it'll be meal car would cover the driver, but there is an application process. Someone has to fill out an application and become certified by meal car.
I didn't quite understand that. Once again, who, if this person runs and causes an accident, where's the liability with the pocket city?
The liability's with meal car, not with the city. The only thing that the city is doing is providing them the space to park the car and buying the vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Let me, to also add one more thing, as I'm looking on their website, the user is responsible, if they cause an accident, they are responsible for the $500 deductible, as well as any third-party claims created by the user.
All right. Then I guess we'll move on to item number two, Councilman Walker. You had some questions?
Just some clarification on page 12, deferred compensation. There's six entries there, just wondering where those deferred compensation charges are.
That's if employees waive the options for medical insurance, they're allowed that deferred compensation.
In lieu, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
And just quickly, a small question, I guess, probably Justin, page 18, for light replacements. Just curious, where are those light replacement and Ford Deco light globes there?
What are they for?
Yeah, where were they, or what those?
I believe two, one was on McKinry, one was on Dollar Ride, those were mainly from accidents. When accidents happen and a car hits it, then we'll get it replaced and hope they have insurance and have them replace it for us.
Great. Hey, that's all I have.
Great, so at this point, if we've got all the questions out there, then we can work for our motions on items two, three, and four.
I'll motion to approve items two, three, and four from the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five oh. Next up, we have staff communications and updates. Who wants to start?
So before you, we have the Treasurers Report, Police Department Report, Animal Control, Recreation, Development Services, Public Works, Building Department, Water Department, Wastewater Treatment Plant, reports all for the month of May. Some updates, I'm going to go first since I have such a list going here. A few meetings ago, the council directed staff to include quarterly reports for both the S S J I D and wastewater treatment plant modernization projects. Those will start next month. We're going to put them on the same quarterly schedule as as other quarterly reports that we have, and so those will be reported out for June. And then also, as indicated in the consent calendar item number six, which had to do with the fiscal year budget, it was requested by staff that a budget presentation slash workshop be presented at the July, on July 17th, for two special meetings at 3:00 P. M. and 6:00 P. M. And then we would schedule for the budget adoption of a regularly scheduled meeting on August 7th. So I just wanted to make that announcement, and then as we get closer to those times, we'll put something out on the Facebook or create some type of flyer to make sure that everybody is aware. And then this will give us adequate amount of time to make sure we're, you know, checking all of the appropriate places, dotting all of the i's, crossing t's, and moving that forward. Also, in regards to items number seven through 16, which have to do with our landscape maintenance districts, benefit assessment districts and such, these are put on the consent calendar because they're essentially starting the process. These will come back to you at the July 17th meeting in accordance with those resolutions, and that is when their public hearings will be scheduled. So those reports will be ran in the next agenda for those public hearings, so you'll see them again in the next meeting. I just wanted to make you aware of that. Right now, this is starting proceedings, scheduling public hearings, and so they are scheduled for the July 17th meeting, so you'll see those. And then, July 3rd is our next regularly scheduled meeting. Because of it being so close to Independence Day, which is that Tuesday, July 4th, past councils have gone dark on those meetings and not scheduled those meetings. If that's the consensus of council, we can do so. I just wanted to get consensus from you on that item, whether that would be appropriate or not, or whether you would want to have that meeting that day.
I'm okay with going dark, myself. Everybody else good?
I think unless something important comes up.
Unless something important pops up, yes. Okay, so consensus to go ahead and do that? Okay, we will cancel meeting unless otherwise meeting is needed. And just wanted to give you an update. As you may be aware, this year, our housing element is required to be updated. We had put out a request for proposals for our housing element. We did receive a number of proposals. That item will be prepared and also presented to the council for a contract agreement at the next meeting on July 17th, so we just wanted to let you know where we're at on that item. And then announcement-wise, and I'm trying not to jinx it, I'm 99.9% sure I have somebody officially hired that will start the Development and Community Services Manager position in July. I'm not going to name names yet because I want it to fall through, to go through, so we're very excited to have somebody in that position. We've been searching for over a year now to find somebody in this position. They have a lot of planning experience. They they are a planner, essentially, and so we're very excited to see him start in July, so you'll probably see him at the meeting of the 17th. And then from the last meeting, we had talked about Park Feet, the parade, and they did send us an application for a parade entry, and we kind of waited till this meeting for when the mayor was available to discuss whether or not the council was interested in writing in the parade, and if anybody had a vehicle that they'd like to utilize, and/or if you wanted to use one of our vehicles, I think that would be fine as well.
Would say yes to a float?
Or a float, yes.
Of some sort.
We wanted to see if your truck was available, Mr. Mayor.
It is. My father was looking for the excuse not to have to march with his bad leg, so he's looking for the duties of driving that, so I think we're set up then.
So the parade is on the Saturday, July 15th, and it will start at 10:30 a.m., and so they would want you to check in by 9:45, and then we need to submit the application, so I could go ahead and complete that application. Do we know, is anybody not going to be able to make it for this? So I could just RSVP that all of you will be there, or does everybody look like they'll be there that day?
I'm good. I'll be there.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and RSVP for all of you.
Mr. Mayor and Pro temp Hagan, do you guys throw out candy at all during the parade?
We have in the past.
Yeah, ideally.
Okay.
And whatever you think you need, by double.
Right.
We like to share candy, so the more folks in the truck that has the candy to pass out to kids, the better.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and get that submitted.
Mr. Romo, I can also add, if you want to use a transit bus, we can provide that as well.
Okay, and if you guys want to ride in the bus?
I like Dave's truck.
Truck's easy to throw out the back.
Did the windows come out of the bus, John?
We could take out the emergency window, so, yeah, they would be open.
I think we should stick with Dave's truck.
It works.
Okay, okay.
But thank you.
But thanks for the offer.
Okay, Director, so Pete?
Yeah, it's just the Treasurers Report, so at the end of May, we still have a negative cash balance for that well site 1A where we need to reach out to S W R C B to get the reimbursement for it, so it takes a while for them to get the funds back to us, but overall, our cash balances in the general fund looks great. General reserve balance is there, so we haven't really touched that that much, too, so that's it.
Chief Flores?
I don't have anything to report this time.
All right.
Superintendent Collins?
Yes, I kind of want to go over a little bit of last council meeting. We had a lengthy discussion on some parking issues downtown. Staff and I kind of went down in the area to take a look, to see if we could come up with any kind of solutions or any kind of possible things that would be good over there. One of the questions where there was a curbing that was brought up, that was asked if we could remove the curbing that would help for parking, we would not be able to remove the curb for the simple fact it's a smaller curb that's tied into an ADA ramp that goes really to nowhere, so I just would suggest we don't move, remove an ADA ramp if we don't need to. Walking the area, we did find some code enforcement issues that we will be able to address. Police Department has already been on them. I can't say that we'll pick up a lot of parking because of some of the enforcement we found, but I would think we should be able to pick up a little bit. With that being said, we are going to be able to add two parking stalls on First Street, just adjacent to the trailer park there. Engineer and I, we kind of looked at it and feel like we can add two spots there that will be close to the businesses downtown that would be helpful. And at the moment, we're evaluating and updating Roosevelt. We do have an engineer's estimate from that, but I believe it was five, six, seven years ago, so we're, obviously, we know those numbers will be different. And we're going to do the same thing for Center. Looking at Center Street, I think it's a great idea of removing the trees, and I truly feel like if we remove the trees and without impeding anybody's front yards, I think we can widen the road a bit that would allow for street parking on Center Street as well. So we can come back to you at another time and let you know kind of where we have evaluated that, what the pricing is, that's, those are your bigger ticket items, but in the meantime, we'll do what we can to kind of get the area cleaned up and see if that'll help in the immediate future. Another question was brought up about, I guess there was a lot of trash around school areas and stuff. Did talk to the superintendent of the school there. They would be more mindful of it. Sometimes it's stuff that's just kind of blowing on the road that blows air, blows into the lawns, but they said they will keep an eye on it, and if they felt like they needed to add more cans in the area, they would. Also, at the treatment plant, we started today removing the sludge, which is a long process, so we're in the process of that, preparing for our season. About mid-July, we should get rolling with tomatoes and bell peppers, depending on how the fields are drying up for them, so I'll keep you posted on that. I just want to remind all the residents out there, I do have a crew out crack sealing at the moment. You'll see a crew that's blowing stuff out of a crack, so we've got some random questions on what in the world are we doing? But that is, we prepare, we blow out those cracks, then we go back and put asphalt in, so there's a good cure, but you will see barricades on the side of the road for no 48-hour parking. We would just appreciate if you would abide by that, so we can get in and get out, and that's all I got for now.
Thanks. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I have a question, but I don't know who to ask it to. So I'm going to ask you, chief, I noticed some tagging on a garage on, at the corner of California or on 120 and.
Sacramento. H2O X4.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all that, too.
So is that a code enforcement issue or?
I believe Justin has already addressed it.
Yeah, it is a code enforcement issue, not to interrupt you, but we have to give the resident at least 48 hours to get it removed. We did contact the owner, made them aware of it, and they're going to get it removed. Come maybe Thursday or Friday, if it's not, I'll take care of it for them.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Chief, is that, have you seen it already?
Yeah.
The tagging?
Yes.
Is that something we need to be worried about, like like a gang-type tagging, or is that just random?
It just appears to be random. Kids come by and do different things. I haven't seen that before, so, but we can look into it to see if other cities have seen the same thing, see if they're, it's something that we have to be concerned about.
Okay, thank you.
It does seem like it's a very young age that sprayed it on there.
And then I just wanted to follow up with the council and remind you that when it comes in terms of code enforcement, we always try to work with the businesses and/or property owners to obtain voluntary compliance, so that means if if they're able to make progress and show that they're moving forward on addressing the issue, we do provide them time to be able to fit around their schedule if it's reasonable that way that they're addressing it in terms of, you know, monetary and convenience of being able to get those things done. So it it might be a process, especially when we're working with businesses down there regarding code enforcement over in the Roosevelt Center Street area, because those businesses have been operating in that fashion for several years, so it does take them a while to adjust and find other places to store their items, and so it might be a process, but we will be working with them on achieving that.
Good, yeah. And whatever we can do to educate and continue to work towards the solution.
Yes, sir. And additionally, I believe a couple meetings ago, you had a question about the zero bike.
Oh, yeah.
So we still have a spot in Hollister for one officer to go and do some training to get that bike back on the street. I'm in the process of, got a couple officers that are interested in going to that school, so we'll have that that bike, hopefully, I think the schooling is in July, so maybe by August, we'll have that bike out.
Good. Glad to see we got some opportunity there. Good. Anything else on staff communication?
That's it, thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to the next item, which is matters presented for the public. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the City of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record. Hour is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by them. And with that, let's open it up to those folks here in the room.
Hello, Mayor, your pro temp, and council members. Obviously, Cody Fowler, 1550 Judith Way. Want to discuss something briefly here. First of all, by the time you guys meet after tonight, your Escalon police officer's contract will have been expired for over one year at that point, so I just want to bring that timetable up to you guys. I know it kind of sucks. You inherited the problem from the previous council, I get it, but been expired for a year, we got to do something about it. It's also my understanding that after talking to some individuals that, you know, there was a fair offer that was put out there, I'm guessing you're going to be presented with that tonight, and EPOA, I believe, is asking for a one-year contract with 15% raise plus $5,000 each officer, and that goes towards not being retro- $5,000 each officer, and that goes towards not being retroactive back towards, back a year. So just want to add that I think that's certainly a fair and equitable raise, given that I myself have come to this council on several occasions and presented evidence to suggest that our officers are paid up to 20% less than every surrounding agency around us. So I think that is a fair and equitable offer for both parties. It should cost you $197,000, that was quite a bit less than I talked about last time, for, obviously, for a three-year contract, and, yeah. So I would just like to remind you guys, please, we need to take this seriously, hopefully the city manager's presenting that same offer that I was told was going to offer to the city, and let's, let's just put this thing to bed so we can move on, that would be my request, so that's all I have, thank you.
Again, Sherri Hill. I actually have two things tonight, and Chief, I'll just going to spit out what I was going to tell you later. The Almond Grove Clubhouse has been deemed like a place to go when there's heat or, okay, so that clubhouse's air conditioner and heater hasn't been working for over a year, so you might, that's not a good place to take the seniors. You get 15 of them in there and it's hot, it's way hot, I've been in there myself, and I can turn on the wall, they do have a wall air conditioner, so just take note of that. If you don't turn it on the night before, it's not going to cool that building down, and if you put more than 15, 20 bodies in it, even if you turned it on the night before, it's going to get way too hot. But they do have a central air and heat system that hasn't been working, so, and it is, has been brought to their attention, so, okay, that's a different issue. My other issue has to do with our police department, and thank you, I love our police department, I love our town. I know you have negotiations before you, I don't really care if we're comparable to towns our size for our police department, and I'm going to tell you why. I don't care if you're looking at the same-sized town or communities that are around us. What I care about is that my house was tagged, and on Saturday night, when the two lovely police officers came to my door at 10:00 p.m. and said to me, you know, it's gang-related, my little antennas go, mm, we got gangs in Stockton, we have criminals that are let loose in French Camp, both of those towns border us, we have criminal elements in Modesto, we have mountains here, and besides that, you can't air Escalon to any other community because we have the Bay Area that travels through us. We're a thoroughfare, we hear the sirens, we have the accidents that happen all the time, and they're not always our residents, but they're those that are traveling through. We have to pay for that, and we have to have people take care of us. So I would much rather have three to four times the police force that we need for our city, so that our city and our children are safe. I would rather have overeducated and senior officers in our town to protect us and to be bored out of their gourd because they have nothing to do, so that we keep our little community safe. That's why we all moved here, we like the small and we like it safe. If you would like to put forward a tax, again, please make sure that the residents understand, unlike we did last time, that the tax is specifically for the police, it will only be used for the police, nobody understood that, all they heard was tax and said no. So there's got to be some creative ways to do this, I would like mature officers who have experience to be here, and I would like more than we need, and I would like our little community to be protected, and neighborhood watches are wonderful and fantastic, but we still need a police force, and that's going to be the deterrent to the criminal element, so, anyway, and if anybody wants to come help me paint my house.
I just have a question, I don't know how that radar for the traffic, how that works, like if you're going over the speed limit, if it gives you a number of how many cars are going over the speed limit, but the one right now on Brennan, if you're doing 45, halfway down that, it tags you, the lights flash on and says, slow down, but you're not in the 35, you're in the 45. So I don't know if that's how it gathers, but it's tagging cars in the 45 that are actually doing 45. As soon as you hit the first sign that says that you're tracking the traffic and the house is on the left, right there, it picks you up and starts flashing these lights, slow down, slow down, and you're in the 45. So I don't know if that is a point that it's, because it's going to give you a lot of false data, because it's tagging everybody in the 45.
Thank you.
I come there four times a week.
Thank you.
I'm tagged four times a week.
Well, good to know there's not a camera on that thing, so you should be all right. Anybody else? All right, then we're going to go ahead and...
Check online real quick.
Sorry, anybody online that has anything that needs to bring to the council's attention? All right, hearing none, then we'll go ahead and close matters presented from the audience and move on to administrative matters, the annual transit update, I believe that's John?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, John Yacko again, Transit Manager, and here I'm to present our annual transit update. Many of you are new, and I believe this is part of my first time meeting you, some of you, so I'm just going to give you an update on E-Trans, the transit service that has been providing service in the city of Escalon since 1977, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about the service. First and foremost, E-Trans is a contracted service. In my case, I'm the Transit Manager, and I've been with the city for the past 23 years in overseeing E-Trans, and we contract out the operations previously to the Stanislaus Regional Transit Authority, whereas E-Trans was part of their integrated transit system. And then, most recently, we were able to secure an alternate contractor as they were no longer interested in running our service, and that is now MTM. And they have, and that's, they're based out of St. Louis, Missouri, but they have contracts to operate transit for the cities of Tracy and now Manteca as of July 1st. E-Trans is two components to the system, there's a door-to-door dialeride service that operates within the city limits of Escalon, it runs primarily between 9:00 and 11:00 in the morning, and then again between 11:00 and 12:00, and then again between 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. Then there is the Route 35 that operates three trips between Escalon and Modesto, it starts at the Almond Grove Mobile Home Park, works its way through Jackson and California streets, then down past the post office and the library, serves the Escalon parking ride, goes to Heritage House, then down McHenry, past City Hall and the various shopping along McHenry, into Modesto where it will serve the Kaiser Permanente, Vintage Fair Mall, destinations on Standardford Avenue, including the Target, and then up McHenry, serving the Auto Mall and Walmart and the movie theater, and then back into Escalon, and then it repeats itself two other times throughout the day. And those trips depart Escalon at 8:12, 1:12, and 4:12. The service is primarily, the Route 35 is primarily funded through Measure K, there's a special allocation within Measure K that allows the cities of Escalon and Ripon to receive dedicated funding for providing public transit services between the cities, between their cities and Modesto, and that will continue through calendar year 2041. I'm on page 287 of the packet, by the way. Particularly, the transit system serves those that are transit-dependent, so primarily seniors, persons with disabilities, youth, or those that are low-income that do not have the abilities to own or operate a motor vehicle. In the case of overall funding for the transit system, the city does not contribute any general fund to E-Trans, we're an enterprise fund, basically a transit, it's called the Transit Fund, and we use what is passenger fares, federal funds, and Transportation Development Act funds. And within the Transportation Development Act funds, there's a local transportation fund, which is sales tax money that is reallocated from the state to the counties, and then reallocated to the cities by population, and then the state transit assistance, which comes from sales tax on diesel.
It's like...
We just dropped John? We'll give him a quick minute to call back in.
Probably have to disconnect and then recome in, and re... I have to say, I do love when he gives his annual report, he's very thorough in explaining transportation.
This, does he know he's disconnected? He's not still giving his presentation?
That's actually a good...
He's on page 300.
Oh, there he goes.
I'm sorry, do you hear me okay?
You're back, John.
We waited for you.
Yeah, I lost, I lost Wi-Fi for a second, my apologies.
No worries.
Did you hear me explain transit funding on page 287 and 288?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I was about to say that we are using LC TOP to cover passenger fares, which makes E-Trans free to the general public, and then we use state of good repair to cover the costs of maintaining the transit system. Most recently, we've been successful in receiving federal funds through the Federal Transit Administration, passed through Caltrans, and we were able to get CARES Act funding, CRISA funding, and American Rescue Plan funding. So we have enough funding, in essence, to cover the costs of the transit system for approximately three years, which means that we're not using any local transit, transportation fund to operate E-Trans, and we've been basically allocating all of that to cover streets and roads projects that Public Works needs, like for slurry seal projects and roadway improvements. And we, and we also went to SJCOG last year, and we talked with them and got their board approval to be able to get an exemption from the transit policy, so that we don't have to hold 25% of that LTF funding for transit, and we can basically allocate it all to streets and roads, so, for the, for the next three fiscal years, since we have this dedicated federal funding. We, and the reason why we made that request was, the city gets approximately 350,000 of LTF, 25% of that is generally 70 to 80,000 dollars a year, and with all the various grants we get for the transit system, we don't necessarily need 70 or 80,000 of LTF to cover our transit costs. And since roadway needs are highly important in the city, we felt it was important to see if we could seek that exemption. Page 288 also mentions that we generally get a... Oh, yes?
I was just going to say, we definitely fought for those funds for the city.
Yes, exactly. On page 288, our overall budget, basically 1% comes from the fares from LC TOP, 27% comes from Measure K, 69% comes from federal funds, 9% comes from miscellaneous revenues such as advertising on the bus, you may see that honeybee advertising, advertising for the electric repair on our buses, and then TDA right now is 1%, that's basically used to operate E-Trans. On to page 289, for last fiscal year, the transit system carried 1,801 passenger trips, average weekday, we carry about seven people to ride the transit system. The same period last fiscal year, we carried 1,523 passenger trips, and the average weekday riding the system was six. Of course, the pandemic impacted the ridership, particularly for the dialeride system, 825 passengers rode dialeride, and the average weekday is three, and for the same period last fiscal year, it was 649, and the average weekday still remained at three. For Route 35 to Modesto, we transported 976 passenger trips, the average weekday was four, and the same period last fiscal year was 874, and the average weekday was three. Some of the increases to Route 35 occurred because of the integration with Stan RTA system, which is called Ride the S, as well as RTD reestablished bus service from Manteca and Stockton to Escalon, which has been gone, which has been absent for close to a decade, and that also helped for people who want to come from other areas of the county into Modesto. I recognize that these ridership statistics are extremely low, and the way, because of how our rural nature of our transit system, this has been the trend for the last 15 years, and this is basically just a mobility service to help those that are transit-dependent, and with the various grants that we've received to help cover this cost, that's why we've not been able to have any unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet, which allows a large line share of our LTF to be able to go back to streets and roads. On page 293, we, the city owns three vehicles for E-Trans, two of those vehicles are low-floor cutaways, and one of them is a minivan. Through December 31st, Stan RTA operated the transit system, and they were the contractor for basically two years, they subcontracted the operation to, previously was National Express, and then they, then TransDev, and they provide the bus operators who, and dispatchers who operated and dispatched the system. Stan RTA then also contracted with the city of Modesto to maintain the vehicles, and they were maintained at the city of Modesto's bus maintenance facility. One thing to note, before Stan RTA came into existence, the city actually had a relationship with the city of Modesto, and the city of Modesto and Stanislaus County opted to divest public transit and create a joint powers authority, which is called the Stanislaus Regional Transit Authority, which in turn assumed the operations of Modesto Express, Stanislaus Regional Transit, and our contract to operate the transit system. Since Stan RTA opted to not continue to operate our system, we had a search for a transit provider, so there was no transit service from January 1st to approximately February 20th, and once we found an operator, we have secured a one-year contract, a one-and-a-half year contract with MTM to operate our transit system. MTM provides the drivers, the dispatchers, and the maintenance, the vehicles are stored here in Escalon, but the operations base is in Tracy. Page 294, our on-time performance for the dialeride portion has been about 98%, we're able to pick up people within 15 minutes of call and then drop them off. For Route 35, due to congestion in Modesto, particularly on McHenry, last fiscal year, the on-time performance was about 68%. On the fare side, we previously had a fare structure where passengers were paying fares, when we were able to get the LC TOP grant, we went to the city council for concurrence on March 7th of 2022 to make E-Trans free, as long as LC TOP is able to cover the fares for those passengers, and the intent of going fare-free was to help grow the ridership on E-Trans. On page 296 of the packet, as an TDA claimant to fund our transit system, E-Trans is required to meet two of the three transit system performance objectives that is set by the Stanislaus, San Joaquin Council of Governments. Those objectives include passenger cost per hour, passengers traveling per hour, and subsidy per passenger. Because of the pandemic, the state of California suspended these performance measures for two fiscal years, ending June 30th of 2023. these, uh, performance measures for two fiscal years, ending June thirty of two thousand twenty-three. And then, starting on July one of two thousand twenty-three, will be required to resume meeting these objectives. As long as the city meets two of the three objectives, then the city will continue its eligibility for TDA to be used for the transit system. If the city was not to meet two of those three, uh, performance measures, we would have to, that, we have up to three fiscal years to meet, meet those objectives before a portion of the TDA is withheld. We've never been in a situation where that has happened. We've always historically have met two of the three performance objectives, which has been operating cost per revenue hour and subsidy per passenger. Moving on to, and on to, on page three hundred, you could see the previous objectives that the city, uh, had in relation to those passenger objectives, ending fiscal year twenty-one. Accomplishment-wise, uh, page three hundred and one of the packet, uh, last fiscal year, we updated our website, participated in various transit meetings, submitted the transit development claim, and received payment from SJ cog, filed the necessary transit reports with the various regulatory agencies, continued advertising sales on our budget, part, uh, received a brand-new bus, uh, promoted transit services provided by RTD for people wanting to come into Escalon, promoted the Consolidated Transportation Services Agency services, advertised in the movie theaters, updated the rider's guide, completed the Trino Performance Audit, uh, to evaluate our performance of the transit system, as well as our federal fund audit with Caltrans, and then held our annual Stuff the Bus event at Main Street Market, Marvell's, where we can, uh, collect food for, uh, Escalon care. And we've been doing that for the past, uh, ten years. In addition to E-Trans, as I mentioned, we have RTD bus service that comes into Escalon. There's a Van Go service that operates, uh, countywide, and it operates like Uber, where you can, uh, order a Van Go vehicle from Escalon and then have it travel to destinations outside of Escalon. And the fares are based on distance. Uh, we connect with Ride BS in Modesto, particularly at McHenry and Standford, and Vintage Fair Mall for people who want to travel throughout Stanislaus County. We also connect with Ripon's Blossom Express at Vintage Fair Mall every Tuesday and Thursday for people who want transportation to Ripon. Back in two thousand eighteen, we created what is called Access San Joaquin. Uh, they claim two percent of the LTF off the top to provide countywide transportation services, particularly for seniors and persons with disabilities. That includes paratransit assessment, uh, travel training to teach people how to use public transit, a discount fare card for people to get discounts on public transit services in the county, an access pass to, uh, provide free transportation on fixed route systems for those that are paratransit certified, and a volunteer transportation program for persons who, uh, are able to find a driver to take them to destinations throughout San Joaquin and Stanislaus Counties. And RTD is the lead agency for that service. Page three hundred and three gives you the statistics for how many Escalon residents took advantage of the programs offered by Access San Joaquin last fiscal year. Some service-ish changes that occurred last fiscal year, as explained on page three oh four. Uh, in the past, RTD has tried various services that's come into Escalon. We had a commuter bus to Livermore Labs that ended in two thousand nine. We had various rural programs serve Escalon that were discontinued. Uh, so in two thousand twenty, working with RTD and the other cities, we restructured the inner-city system, which basically connected every city with an RTD bus to Stockton, uh, utilizing solely the Measure K funds that are allocated for this very purpose. Uh, we also participated in a partnership with Move Stanislaus, SJ cog, and UC Davis to implement a program called BOGO. And it was basically a program to provide volunteer transportation services for city residents, Mantique residents, Lethrop residents, and Riverbank residents to travel, uh, within those areas. Um, it operated for about two and a half years, and it was discontinued due to lack of funding. And particularly, Escalon had five unique riders providing eighty-one passenger trips, uh, during that period. With the discontinuance of this program, we worked with RTD to expand the program so that, the My Ride program, so that Escalon residents can use volunteer transportation in Stanislaus County. And then, uh, the balance just talks about the, the previous goals that have been established by the city short-range transit plan on how to measure E-Trans overall performance. Uh, to conclude the report, uh, we continue to market the transit system to those that need transportation. Uh, we'll do presentations with various organizational groups, participate in various, uh, festivals and events in the city to help increase our ridership. Every year, we do a holiday light tour where we take, uh, residents throughout the city. That's a, it's a way to help increase our ridership. We'll continue to, um, also look at creative ways to market the system to help, uh, increase our ridership. As I previously mentioned, uh, SJ cog has a new policy on how to distribute Transportation Development Act funds, and particularly cities that are under twenty-five thousand in population, uh, by the third year of the policy, which we're already in, we have to reserve twenty-five percent of our LTF for public transit purposes. And as long as there's no unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet, the balance seventy-five percent could go to streets and roads. However, because of the fact we get various grants to cover our program and our transit needs in this community is not that great, we went to El, SJ cog for a reprieve for the three-year period, which will allow us to use one hundred percent of the LTF on streets and roads. However, effective with fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we will have to resume that twenty-five percent unless we go back to SJ cog to seek another deferral for that. And we intend to revisit that to see how the transit system's performing at that time. It should be noted that RTD was very opposed to our request to defer LTF to transit and actively lobbied board members to support their efforts in preventing that from happening. However, that was not successful. Did agree to providing us that reprieve. Um, and that can, oh, the last big piece I do want to mention, which was just approved by council, is that the California Air Resources Board is requiring all public transit agencies, uh, starting in two thousand twenty-six, to purchase only zero-emissions buses. So that's either battery-electric buses or hydrogen-type buses. Uh, we have prepared our, our zero-emissions transition plan, which, as we start replacing our transit vehicles, we will, uh, start looking at battery-electric vehicles. And as part of that, we'll need to look at installing chargers, uh, whether it be at City Hall, the Park and Ride, or the Corporation Yard to charge these vehicles. And, uh, we will submit the resolution and the transition plan to CARB by July first to meet their deadline. And page three eleven just gives you a map of the E-Trans service and the schedule. I'm happy to answer any questions about E-Trans, if there are any.
Open it up, anybody here at the council got a question? Mr. Truman?
Yes, uh, John, thank you for your very detailed report. I really appreciate all the information. One of the things that, just a suggestion, I don't know if this is possible, but in the report, I read that, um, you eliminated the stop when Big Boy closed in two thousand seventeen. And now that Orlando's is coming back, I was wanting to know if you were planning on restoring that stop when Orlando's opens?
Yes, we will do that.
Okay, and then my other question, just something to consider is, uh, you know, our senior community likes to go to McDonald's and get a cup of coffee or get a sundae, and I was wondering if you would consider adding a stop close to Country Wood and McHenry when McDonald's is built?
Actually, well, we already have a stop there, and it's gonna be right in front of the McDonald's.
Perfect.
So, yeah, I envision our riders will either use the dialer ride service to go there or the Route thirty-five.
That would be great. That's all I have.
Any other questions out there? Anybody in the audience or online have any questions? Not seen any, John? Good presentation, as usual, appreciate everything you do for us. Um, I guess at this point, we will move to council communications and future agenda items. So let's start off with Councilman Engel.
Sure, uh, glad to see you back, Dave.
Thank you.
I just have one thing I was hoping to get consensus on, and that was to, um, review and hopefully, um, expedite our city business license process.
You know, I don't see any problem with that. Back you on that.
Thanks.
So what are we looking to do?
Well, currently, the process, I, I know, um, Dan is kind of swamped, but it, it can take quite a long time. And when you look at several other cities here in the Central Valley or even, uh, just outside, it's, it's fairly easy to walk in and get a business license the same day. Um, that's, that's not necessarily the case for Escalon. I've heard more than once that, uh, it's been discouraging to somebody trying to start a small home-based business. I think the larger businesses are, are used to jumping through some hoops. But if there is a way to make that a little easier on folks who want to try and start something at home or begin, uh, exploring opening a business in Escalon, that they can see that the process would be smooth and quick, hopefully that would help.
Okay. I would agree with that. Is this something we can look into and see where we're at? Hopefully, a new hire will help as well. Having more staff on site.
So, it sounds like home occupations are the ones that you're specifically looking at?
I, I'd, I'd like to take a look at them all.
Okay, um, so let's put an item together to present, um, on business licenses generally. Um, we have a section of the code on that, and then we do have a separate section that I, um, that discusses home occupation, uh, which are businesses that are operating out of the home. Um, and then we can bring those to council and kind of, uh, discuss those. It would probably be something that would be more like in August. Is that, okay, okay?
Reasonable.
Okay, um, and so we will put that on the radar to work towards.
That's all I've got. Councilman Truman, what you got tonight?
Uh, just a few things. Councilman Engel, thank you for bringing the business license thing up. Research I've done, it's very, very complicated. And, and in my opinion, I don't think it needs to be that complicated, especially whenever our folks are just trying to open up a little business out of their house. So it's definitely something encouraging to look in, so thanks for bringing that up. Just as a friendly reminder, um, the June farmer's market is coming up on Wednesday. And, um, kind of after Park Feet, uh, National Night Out is currently scheduled for August first. So if you're planning on having a little get-together in your neighborhood, please, do they contact the police department chief? Or how, if people are interested in signing up their areas?
Yes, uh, I believe that, uh, they're working on the letter to include, uh, Mayella Sales, which is our CSO. Uh, that'd be the point of contact for the National Night Out this year.
Okay.
We'll also be advertising on the, on our Facebook page as well for both police department and the city.
Okay. I am a little concerned regarding, um, you know, Mayor Pro Tim Hagan, uh, and I were talking about the tagging that we saw. And then, uh, Sherry Hill noted that her house got tagged, same general area. Um, so it's definitely something that we need to take a more active role. I don't know if, if the tagging on, uh, Sherry's house was the same as what was on the, um, that garage, but definitely don't want it to get out of hand quick. Um, and last but certainly not least, um, Happy Blated Father's Day to all our dads in Escalon. I hope you had a good time with your family, 'cause that's what matters most.
Councilman Truman, uh, Councilman Walker?
Sure, just a few comments. A couple meetings ago, there were some wee debatement issues brought up. I'm happy to see that those have been fixed, and our town is looking very nice and clean right now for summer and the busy season for travelers to be going through Escalon and making it look, um, nice for travelers to stop here and do business. So, um, looks good. Uh, I'm also happy to see that Park Feet has returned to its classic July date. And so hopefully, that will encourage people to come back out, and college students who are returning home and everybody to be able to, um, come back for that Escalon reunion in July. Um, and I hope to see you guys there. And I will be on a parade float, it sounds like. Um, and then, uh, finally, I just want you to, uh, continue coming. We are, and put on the date, or on your calendar, July seventeenth, as, uh, we've made it possible for the budget to be looked at before the actual approval date this year, and that returning to how, um, classically it's been done before. So, um, we're trying to make that as open and transparent for citizens as possible, so please participate in that, um, as much as possible. So I look forward to seeing everybody at Park Feet and then at our budget meetings on July seventeenth. So, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tim Hagan.
Well, it's nice to see you back in the saddle, Dave.
Thanks.
I'm glad you're feeling better. A couple things, I just wanted to, um, thank all the coaches out there for all your, um, efforts in, in coaching our kids. It's, it doesn't go unnoticed. As far as the, the police situation, uh, Cody, I, we hear what you're saying. And, um, depending on how tonight goes and stuff, hopefully, we can release a, you know, fact-based statement if possible, um, so we can give you some more clarity. Other than that, um, have a good Fourth of July with your families, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, um, I'll keep it brief. Yes, looking forward to farmer's market this week. Park Feet, I believe the Lions Club is putting that on, so if you have any interest in a booth or something, um, I believe we should be contacting, that's right? Lions Club, correct? So if you're interested, get on it, it's coming up real quick. Looking forward to seeing everybody out there as well, like everybody else. It's a good meeting tonight, glad to be back. And, uh, I echo the sentiments for the coaches and those that we, uh, at the last minute were able to gather for volunteering, so we didn't have any kiddos, uh, getting kicked out of the program because we didn't have coaches. Good job for you and everybody else who made that effort happen. And, uh, I'll also echo, uh, Happy Fourth of July coming up. Be safe, be careful out there, stay away from the illegal fireworks. Keep everybody's house the way it is, don't want any fires. And with that, we're gonna adjourn down to, uh, closed session. Thank you, everybody.